And the activity of Branch, Columbia. God, we thank you, Lord, for everything that's going on in the city right now and everything there is to come. And this past year's been a great one, Lord, and we thank you for that. Guys, we enter a new year. We always ask you, Lord, for your blessing and your guidance on the city. Be with the people that are in it and be with the people that make it go on a day-to-day basis. Lord, be with the meeting tonight. Let the things be discussed, be beneficial to the city and those therein. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you guys will stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We've got a very busy agenda, and it's packed on this chart, so hopefully you guys can read that. If you can't, there's copies of the agenda that you can take a look at. And while you're looking that over, I'm gonna ask the court to call the roll.
Councilmember Lilly.
Here.
Maazel.
Here.
Ruston.
Here.
King.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here. Okay. Let me sign this right quick. Give you a few more seconds to look over the agenda. As always, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda where we approved the minutes of the last meeting. We have two meetings on September the 2nd. One was a special called meeting which was canvassing the vote, so we'll consider those minutes first. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the special called meeting? If not, let the record show the minutes of the special called meeting were approved as written. The second set of meetings, there is a correction that needs to be made on that. That's for the regular city council meeting on the 2nd. If you look at the minutes for the consent agenda, it talks about basically these minutes that we're approving tonight. It should speak and say that we approved the minutes of the August 19th regular council meeting. So we will, unless there's any other changes or corrections, we'll approve these with this Why don't we, why don't we get a motion on this one since we do have a correction? So is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
And in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So the corrected minutes are approved. All right. We'll start with our department head reports. Chief, you're up first.
Okay. So everything's going well at the police department. They're all green. Except for personnel. We've got two openings. We actually filled one of those openings earlier this week. A nice young man, Xavier Holmes. I'll bring him around to meet everyone and we'll get him sworn in here in the next couple of meetings. He comes from Montgomery by way of Wakeview, Alabama. He lives in Hoover, and we filled a position. Everything else is going well. The only other thing is issues and concerns is, so we've got a new, a couple of new DOT officers that are out doing safety inspections on trucks, making sure the trucks are up to par, their legal being on the road, things of that nature. We just want to remind everybody, if you see a first responder on the side of the road, and it's not just for first responders, it's also for tow, EMS, whatever the case may be, please either slow down and move over, or at least just slow down. Okay? These guys, there's been several incidents here in the past couple of weeks that some of these officers have some close calls. People are just not paying attention. Sometimes it's early in the morning and they zip by. So please, just remember, if you see flashing lights of any kind, slow down. Okay? The only other thing is, of course, the openings I talked about, public safety awards are next week. We're honoring Lieutenant Sasha Knight. She is our 2025 Public Safety Award as well as there. We hope y'all can attend and join us in that. So that's about it.
What's the date for that meeting?
Uh, next Wednesday.
It's at the Pelham Civic Complex.
You said Pelham?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Pelham.
It's 11 to 1. Any questions for the chief? So did I understand that one of those two, that your openings have been filled?
Well, we had three officer openings. One is filled and two are left.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. Any other questions for the chief? All right. Thanks. Admin.
Um, everything is going good in admin. No safety issues, revenues, expenses on track. Training's up to date. Everything's good. The bottom section is our August, through August budget information. The top section is general fund, and the bottom section is all other funds, and everything is looking good.
Yeah, we're actually running at about 2.2 months of our general fund reserve through August, and I think we're probably gonna hold steady there through September, so that's good. Okay? Any questions or comments for the clerk? Court?
Um, everything is going good. Next week, Ashlyn and I will go to Orange Beach for the magistrate's conference, where Ashlyn will receive her certification. And then our prosecutor, Wayne Spence, will also be down there roughly the same time doing their, the law side of it. And that's it.
Any questions for Terry? And Public Works?
Everything's going pretty good in Public Works. We stay busy picking up roads. Right now, we're spending a lot of time in the cemetery, cutting a lot of bushes down. It's just got out of control. We've talked to some of the people that we know. We've still got people living years out by cutting them, and they, they was done, but God, we couldn't see the tiny stones and stuff. Electrical work at the new shop stuff is going at a pretty steady pace and stuff. They're starting to hang some of the lights up on the outside and everything today when I was up there and getting them ready to, on the inside and everything. So I hope in the next four or six weeks, they should be pretty much through with that, I hope.
So they're still waiting on some material?
Yeah, they're still waiting on the lights for the inside and everything.
Any questions for Alan?
A lot of people say they like the tree cutting at the boys' baseball, so appreciate that.
Yeah, from behind, I've got one right there. Yeah, we're gonna have to figure out something to do with that. That makes washing and pushing and fence.
It looks better, though.
Notice some lights up in the front is out there. Are they out or they on a timer?
Which ones?
The ones out here in front of the building out here.
Them on the white pole?
Yes.
They ain't worked in years.
What about right out here? In the parking lot, right here?
None of them on the pole. That's what they wore out. Getting by parts on them all.
Any other questions for Alan? All right, board reports. Alan, what about the water board?
Just, yeah, I got all this stuff. Get ready to meet with them, and we're gonna meet probably Thursday on our budget down there with business and get the motion.
Okay. All right. Planning Commission, it's gonna be a little bit redundant, I think, with what we covered tonight, but...
Um, let's see. At the last meeting, we had one application for rezoning. It was on Highway 47 South, going from RMH to M2. And then we had, one, two, three, four from, that the city initiated on Highland Drive that are all no zoning. Those will all go to R1. All of those applications were approved. They'll come to Planning Commission for a public hearing in October, and then they'll come to council in November. And then we also approved the final plat for Saddlewood Phase 2.
How many lots is that? Do you know?
I cannot remember how many was, maybe 30? I can't remember.
You said RMH to M2 on 47 South?
Mm-hmm. It is right before you get out, it's gonna be on the right-hand side right before you get out of city limits.
Any other board reports?
I'll adapt some to Park and Ray. Al, thanks for getting those lights and stuff up at the ball fields. We put those behind the city shop, am I correct there? So that, that's that. And just got ball, baseball, softball, football, and our five-foot lot going on now, so there's a lot of activity going on sports-wise.
Yeah. Is that time of year?
The beautification board met last week. Y'all all saw the big pallet of boxes out here. That's 52 new strands of lighted garland for Christmas, to the tune of right at $9,000. So we opted to purchase them outright instead of going through a company that the mayor had given us a recommendation on that would sort of lease it. We could lease the garland. They would come put it up and take it down. But it was $8,800 for that quote, so we just opted to own it outright instead of having to lease it every year and pay that amount every year.
Was that gonna be, that was the yearly price?
Yes. So anyway, we own, we now own 52 things of garland. The garland has been, we've had it for years and years and years. There were a couple new ones bought in 2019, but they were all just brittle and falling apart every time the guys put them up. So 2025, we're starting, starting fresh, and it's for every lamppost from East Sterit all the way downtown around the roundabout up to see every lamppost in town. So then we also, we're trying to spend the rest of our budget. Notice all the planters on Main Street have been dumped. We got fresh dirt, and flowers will be installed. And then we have pumpkins that we're trying to get that huge big tall pumpkin display that we did last year at the red light this weekend. So we're ready for fall. Fall and Christmas.
Do you have to put lights on the garland, or?
No, it comes lit, yeah. It's pre-lit.
Any questions for Lisa on the beautification board? Okay, thanks. Whoops, I went the wrong way. Okay. We're gonna end up having to suspend this meeting and go into a public hearing, so y'all bear with me where I'm gonna follow the script here to make sure that we do this the proper way. So proper notice of this regularly scheduled meeting of the Columbia City Council is given in advance of this public hearing, and the meeting notice remains posted through this scheduled meeting. So I'll now entertain a motion to suspend this regularly scheduled council meeting in order to have a public hearing. I'd like the motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so this has to be by unanimous consent of the members to suspend the meeting and hold the public hearing, so would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
Maazel.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. All right. So I now declare the regular meeting suspended. Okay, so I'll call this public hearing to order to hear from anyone speaking for or against the pre-zoning. And I'll talk to you a little bit about this before we get into the discussion, of tax parcel number 212100001 dot triple zero and tax parcel 211110 triple zero 001 dot triple zero. And this is from no zoning to A1. This property is located in the vicinity of Highway 47 North on Chelsea Road. This is a pre-zoning, and once this property is pre-zoned, we will have another opportunity to discuss the annexation of the property and annex it. But it's this property right here. This is Chelsea Road, Highway 47. I think going out this way, this is Joiner Town Road, and this boundary up here, I think, is Rock Ridge Road. And so it's basically these two parcels right here. They're currently not inside the city limits, so they're not zoned, and we will be pre-zoning them to A1, which is agricultural. So is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this pre-zoning request?
Hey, here we are.
Good.
I'm Shawn Brown, and I represent Johnny Walker. He's the owner of the property. As you guys know, guys and girls, a lot of people wanna move to Shelby County and specifically Columbia. And we are not against high-density developments, but our forte and our passion is low-density, you know, housing, you know? And in this property, the future plans for it would be a mini-farm development where we would, you know, continue to enhance the trees and the vegetation and the privacy that's there currently while, you know, providing an opportunity for homeowners and landowners to move to Columbia and own land in this community.
I appreciate that. I want to remind the council members that this is a public hearing. It's not a time for debate. This is time for us to hear for or against those who would speak against it, and we'll we can have a discussion about these properties after we reconvene the regular council meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this pre-zoning request? Okay. Well, if not, we'll move on. So now what we're gonna do is we're gonna consider the rezoning of this next parcel. Now, this parcel's already in the city limit, so this would be a 17263001001 dot triple zero, and this will be rezoned from R1 Residential to M2. The property's located in the vicinity of the Highway 25 bypass. And so here's basically Highway 25. This property here, adjacent to the, what I've got outlined in black, is about five acres that's being requested to be rezoned from R1 to M2. Basically, all of this is currently R1, and this is being carved out. This adjacent property is already empty area. So is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of rezoning this, this property?
Mr. Mayor.
Nobody knows who you are, so would you tell us?
Elizabeth Hanley's husband, Stan.
Yes, yeah.
You stole my thunder. The thing I was gonna point out, and I wanted to assure that council and mayor know, is that the adjacent property to the west is already empty.
Right here.
And then I thought you might be interested in, there's a fellow business person, a Columbia business person, who is interested in purchasing this property for his business, to build his business there. So away from his home and into a city that would be more amenable to him. So as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, the, that area's kind of already set itself up as a little bit of a commercial district, and the, that's pretty much all I've got to say about it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Okay. Would anyone like to speak against this rezoning request? Okay. If there's no other comments, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing. I'd like that motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of adjourning the public hearing? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So the hearing is adjourned, and we'll now reconvene the regular council meeting. Let me find my place on this very busy agenda here. Okay. So this is an ordinance for the pre-zoning of the property on Highway 47 North that we just discussed and we heard from. So is there any further discussion or questions from the council?
I'm just interested in understanding a farming community. What do you mean by that?
Just a, a mini-farm development, similar to like Chelsea Farms. That would be a similar mini-farm development. You know, a lot of people in the last, gosh, 10 years have wanted to have five or 10, 20 acres. And so that's kind of been our business model, really, for the last 20 years, is just taking a piece of property and doling it up, making sure it's got a good road system and providing utilities, you know, to homeowners, and then selling that property in five, 10, 15, 20-acre, you know, some of them 40-acre tracks.
Okay.
Just depending on how it breaks up. And this track is very unique. I mean, in all of this county, it's really unique because it does have road frontage on 47 and Rocky Ridge Road, which gives us access from Rocky Ridge Road. Very little traffic on Rocky Ridge Road, so we want to make that a nice entrance, you know, for the, for the homeowners to be able to come in and out and not have to exit on 47. Although there will be an entrance on 47, Rocky Ridge will provide an entrance and an exit as well, so.
How many acres is that total?
Um, it's 400, I have to look it up. I think we said it's 435.
Okay, that's fine.
Give or take.
Okay.
So it's about four, a little over 400 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I think what we'll do before we consider these ordinances, I'd like to discuss each one of them so independently, and then, and then we can come back and consider the ordinances. So the next one would be the ordinance for the rezoning of Highway 25 from R1 to M2. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council regarding that?
What is that near? Like, you said, M2's already?
It's a cross street from?
Right across the street from Ron McCallay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a little bit north of there. I just came out of the street.
There are many storages there now?
Yes. Two doors down.
Yeah, next door. That's the B2.
Hope it's not gonna be a chicken farm. You know?
Oh, I said chicken's a mine farm.
Any other questions or comments from the council on that one? Okay. So let's move on to the, the other one with ordinance that we will take up. This is the legal description, by the way, of that particular property. The other ordinance that will be taken up is now we have pre-zoned this property, assuming that we pass that ordinance in a few minutes, then we would have the annexation of the property. Are there any questions or concerns about the potential annexation of the property?
I have a question about the annexation. So he mentioned infrastructure. So if we, if we annex the property into the city before, say, for instance, roads are built? So if we annex that property into the city, we're responsible for those roads or bridges or whatever, right? Is it, there won't be any roads going through?
We're not responsible for them until we take...
No. The, the roads would have to meet, you know, the city standards, and they would be looked at by our engineer before we would ever take ownership, if you will, and responsibility for those roads. We have some other ones where the developers have not even come to us on the estate-type properties and asked us to consider taking over those roads. Basically, they have a, an HOA that deals with it and takes over the roads. That's my question. Is that similar to what you would envision? Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. So I'm gonna go back here, and here's what we're gonna try to do. Unless there is any issues or concerns from the council, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and adopt these ordinances at the first reading. And I'd like to go ahead and suspend the rules for all three of these particular ordinances as we take them into considerations. So what we'll need is we'll need a motion to suspend the rules. That will also have to be by unanimous consent, and we'll need a roll call vote. So is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Make that motion.
I'll say it.
Okay. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
Maazel.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Okay. So the rules have been suspended. So the first ordinance is Z07-10-25, which is the pre-zoning of the property on Highway 47 that we just discussed, from no zoning to A1. So I'm not gonna read this. I'm gonna try to summarize it here. We've got a comprehensive zoning ordinance. We've talked about the property. It's owned by the Walker Family Holdings Limited, and we've held a public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission has held a public hearing at the request of the property owner for rezoning this, and they have recommended approval of the annexation and the rezoning, if you will. The city council, we just held our public hearing on this thing, and we've considered the recommendation. So the ordinance is now therefore be ordained by the mayor and the council of the city of Columbia as follows, that the zoning district boundaries be amended so as to rezone the following property from no zoning to A1, and that such pre-zoning should, say, be reflected on the zoning map of the city of Columbia and the parcels, the two parcels that we previously discussed. So is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce ordinance Z07-10-25 to pre-zone the property on Highway 47 North on Chelsea Road from no zoning to A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
Maazel.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Okay. So the pre-zoning ordinance has passed for the property in question here. Okay, now, so we have the property on Highway 25 bypass, rezoning it from R1 to M2. So basically, same thing. This is in accordance with our comprehensive zoning ordinance. We've discussed the location on Highway 25 bypass owned by Stansel and Elizabeth Hanley. We held a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was recommended council that, as follows, the zoning district boundaries will be amended so as to rezone the following property from R1 to M2, and that such rezoning will be reflected on the zoning map of the city council. It's that five acres part of the tax parcel that we talked about. And always is provided, however, that such rezoning is subject to the following condition, which is compliance with the rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of the city of Columbia. So is there a, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce ordinance Z071025A. It's rezoning property on Highway 25 bypass from R1 to M2.
I'll say it.
Okay. And would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
Maazel.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Okay. We're not done yet, okay? So legal description, again, we talked about that. So this now is an ordinance to annex the property that we have pre-zoned on Highway So just kind of going, this, this property is owned by Walker Family Holdings. They filed a petition with the city of Columbia. Just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything. We've, we've looked at the map, showed where it is relative to the corporate limits. Now therefore be ordained by the mayor and the council that the city of Columbia does adopt this ordinance assenting to the annexation of the property. And again, we've looked at those exhibits and the description of the property. So the city limits of the city will be expanded, and it'll be designated on the zoning map for the city. City clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this ordinance. City clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this ordinance, including an accurate description of the property being annexed. And as I just said, the zoning map of the City of Columbiana will be updated to reflect this annexation. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance to annex the property on Highway 47?
I'd like to introduce ordinance 092505, annexation of property on Highway 47 North, Chelsea Road.
Okay, and if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
myself.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, and so the property has been annexed, and it's now zoned because we pre-zoned it before that, so. Okay, so the next thing is a resolution before we have to go back to some more ordinances here. So this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement for law enforcement services for school resource officers. For several years since we've now had resource officers in all of the campuses here in Columbiana, when we first proposed doing that, the City Council stepped up. We went out and were able to actually secure a COPS grant to help us temporarily fund these, but also Shelby County and the Shelby County Board of Education stepped up in a big way. And so what happens here is we have two grants. One is from the county, and it is for, let's see, Shelby County Schools for $75,000 and the Shelby County Commission for $92,000. And I guess I'm going to have to do public math, so that's going to be seven, don't have to carry anything, about 167.5 roughly. Is that close, 75 and 92? So that's a good chunk of change to help us out with funding these school resource officers. So it does carry with it, in consideration of receipt of those funds, that we commit to provide those school resource officers. And so that's the reason why we're having to pass this resolution, because it's essentially a binding contract. So where's the City of Columbiana? She'll provide those school resource officers at each of the three Columbiana schools. We will accept this grant. So is there a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing me to sign this MOA?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so all in favor, this is money too, so would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
myself.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, okay, so the resolution's been adopted. Okay, I'm going to ask that we discuss this before we proceed with it. So we are in the midst of constructing an upgraded sewer treatment plant. Total cost of the project is about $15.1 million. We have received a $2.8 million grant from ADM, funded through ARPA, and we've also received about approximately $2.8 million state revolving fund loan through ADM, and we have basically exhausted those funds. So that's roughly 2.8, that's about $4.6 million. And we now have been offered two supplemental SRF loans to augment what we have done, and totaling also $4.6 million. And the reason it's two loans is because they're basically from two different buckets of money within the state of Alabama, so each one of them will be separate. But these are 20-year state revolving fund loans. The total cost to us is 1.99%. Basically, it's only 10th of a percent interest, and the rest of it is administrative fees that's paid to the state revolving fund. And so, let's see, what we've got here. This is a very, very lengthy and complex ordinance because it's got a lot of legal requirements due to the funding sources that the state gets the money from, that comes from federal sources. So what I'm going to do is summarize it. So the first ordinance for 092507 is for sewer revenue warrant of $1,280,000. And the key thing is it's a revenue warrant, so it comes through the issuer from ADM is an organization called the Alabama Water Pollution Control Authority. So the contract amount's 1.28 million. The start date will be October 15, and the end date of 2025, and the end date will be August 15 of 2046, and the effective date, obviously, October 15. The warrant is payable solely from net system revenues. Because it's a revenue warrant, it's paid for by sewer fund revenues, so the revenues that we collect from sewer fees. It obligates the issuer, which is us, of issuing the warrant, to make and maintain the rates for the sewers such that we can obviously make these payments. There are semi-annual payments. On February 15, it's basically just the interest and fees, and then each year on August the 15, it's principal interest and fees. As I said, the total interest and fees is 1.99% per annum. We can redeem the warrant prior to maturity after about 10 years, 2035. We have to maintain adequate insurance on the sewer system, and we have to maintain liability insurance, and the warrant will be executed by the mayor, and the seal of the issuer will be affixed by the city clerk. So this is identical for both warrants. This is basically the overview of what the ordinance would be obligating us to do. So any questions on this? All right, so just real quick, the second warrant is 092508. This is for $3,340,000, okay, in the principal amount, obviously, and same thing, $3,340, and all these other terms and conditions are the same.
So the August payment is bigger than, biggest one of the year, right?
Yeah, every year, and that's the way our previous SRF loan was. You got, February is the interest and fees, and the August is principal interest and And the other thing is, this first payment is not due until February of '27 on these two loans. All right, so we actually have two ordinances that we're going to have to pass. Is this, that's the second one, I'm sorry, I apologize. This thing is not going in the right direction. Okay, operator error, I'm pretty sure, okay. So are there any questions? We will need to suspend the rules if we choose to adopt these. We need to, if the council agrees, we need to do that. We are actually going to have a signing party tomorrow when the bond attorney will come to City Hall at 11 o'clock, and Charlene and I will be signing a pile of documents. These aren't necessarily the closing documents, these are just the documents that have to be executed prior to closing the loans. So is there a motion to suspend the rules to adopt these ordinances at the first reading?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay, and needs to be unanimous, so would clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
myself.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Okay, would someone like to introduce ordinance 092507?
I'd like to introduce ordinance 092507, providing for the issuance of sewer revenue warrant.
Second.
And because we're obligating ourselves for $1.28 million, we'll also need to have the clerk call the roll on this.
Councilmember Lilly.
Yes.
myself.
Yes.
Ruston.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, okay, so both of the ordinances have passed, and so we're through with all the suspending of the rules and all of the stuff there, but we're not done yet, okay? All right, so this is a little bit complicated, but this is a resolution authorizing the City of Columbiana to support the City of Mountain Brook's petition regarding flood events. And I was contacted by our city attorney. The firm that our attorney works for represents probably most of the municipalities in Shelby County, as well as in other counties, and they represent Shelby County themselves. And recently, there was a lawsuit against the City of Mountain Brook in which they were found through a summary judgment, I guess the word would say, be unlimited liability for damage to property due to flooding through various storm drains and storm ditches and whatnot. And the concern is that throughout the state of Alabama, and certainly it's the case here in Columbiana, we have woefully inadequate storm drainage infrastructure, and it's just stuff that's sort of evolved over the decades and over the centuries, and back when we didn't have, you know, subdivision regulations and plans and rules and things like that. And the concern is, is this unlimited liability to property damage when this infrastructure should cause there to be flooding as a result of heavy rain events is going to be financially egregious, if you will, to most of the cities and municipalities in Alabama. So Mountain Brook is appealing the decision, the summary judgment of the Circuit Court to the Supreme Court of Alabama, and what they are asking us to do is to sign on to an amicus brief, which is basically a friend of the court brief, saying that we support the City of Mountain Brook. It doesn't require the City of Columbiana to do anything, it doesn't require us, it's no cost involved, it's just saying that, hey, we support the City of Mountain Brook, and so, are there any questions? I've done the best I can to explain that.
So basically, Santa, it's like a 100-year flood. It limits a lot of building on the city.
Well, the, it's complicated because I read the decision of the court, and I read some of the, on the back of this thing, some of the concerns about it from some of the other law firms, but it imposes basically unlimited liability on cities when that storm drainage infrastructure causes flooding to, whether it's commercial property, personal property, residential property, or what have you. And there's probably not a city in the state of Alabama, not even Mountain Brook, that has enough money to fix all that stuff and deal with all the damage associated with that. And so, and like I said, there's information on here, so let's, I can, let's see. According to this thing, this is what Ben Owens sent me, there are several glaring problems with this order that have ramifications for every Alabama municipality. These problems include the fact that the court effectively imposes strict liability for flooding events. Two, the failure of the court to recognize that substantive immunity bars claims against, based on a theory, that a city should be forced to upgrade and expand existing stormwater infrastructure that is functioning as designed and intended. And so in some places, and in this case, in this, in Mountain Brook's case, there was a storm drainage infrastructure, not an open ditch, but it was, you know, designed in a certain way, but over time, due to other development around the property, it sometimes gets overtaxed during heavy rains. But, so again, they feel like that the court didn't recognize the, that they should have substantive immunity because it is working the way it was designed. The related failure to recognize both the cities, that the city's duty with respect to stormwater infrastructure decisions is to the general public and not to individual landowners, and the city's obligation to consider the effect of the proposed drainage projects on all landowners. And four, the unprecedented expansion of a negligent maintenance claim, which, as you know, which I don't, but this is lawyer to lawyer talking, which, as you know, is traditionally limited to cases where a city allows stormwater, water drainage pipes to become obstructive with debris or collapse without remedying the problem after receiving notice, to include the theory that a city must upgrade existing infrastructure. So once again, it's saying if the infrastructure is operating as designed, the city shouldn't necessarily have to upgrade it. It also ignores the practical consequences. A strict liability standard would effectively require cities to continually upgrade and replace stormwater infrastructure every time there was a rain event that caused flooding, regardless of whether the infrastructure was functioning as designed, and regardless of the magnitude of the rain event, the 100-year flood, like you just mentioned. The financial and logistical burden of such a rule would obviously be unworkable. Moreover, even if cities upgraded infrastructure, there could be a subsequent larger rain event that caused flooding, regardless of the standard, blah, 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 which would give rise to additional liability and require the city to repeat the process all over again. And so the point is, is even if this summary judgment is overturned, I don't think this issue is going away. I think it's just going to be litigated, and probably there's going to be some additional guidelines come out. But the way the summary judgment was issued, it was setting a precedent, basically creating unlimited liability on cities.
So they're basically saying if a city's infrastructure is working as it intended, say, for instance, it's supposed to have, it can run 50 gallons through there and it rains where it's 100 gallons, they're saying the liability's not on the city for that aspect? If the city's doing what they're supposed to do?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. Because typically, when it was designed, it was designed based on, I guess, the property and the structures and things that were surrounding it. And then a lot, what's really happening here is as additional development occurs, it's overtaxing the systems. So that's what this resolution is, just to sign on to the amicus brief, and all we do would be adding the City of Columbiana's name. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution passed. Okay, let's see where we are. Other city business?
Yep.
Yes?
Oh, you just meant yes, that's where we are.
That's where we are. I was saying, yes, that's where we are. Sorry.
Not yes, she has more.
All right. I take it there's no other city business, okay? All right, mayor's report, budget update. We had a rather lengthy meeting last night to review the FY26 budget, and as always the case, there are concerns and opportunities for improvement, and we've been, I've been working those today, Ricky's been working those today, so we will get some of those changes adopted, and we'll come back together as a group, have another work session, and then we'll end up having to call a special session to get the budget adopted before the end of the month. I just mentioned earlier that we're having this supplemental loan signing party, if you will, tomorrow here in City Hall at 11 o'clock. And it was mentioned earlier that Lieutenant Knighton is our recipient of the Safety Award, and so the Shelby County Chamber at the Annual Community Safety Awards, the Pelham Civic Complex, that's from 11 to 1, the City of Columbiana does have a table for six, so I know some of you expressed some interest, so let us know if you plan to attend. That's about all I've got on that. Any questions? Any questions? Announcements? Christmas in the Park tree sponsorship opens, so who does that open with? Is that, with, is it with Main Street, or is it with the city, or?
Uh, I think that we, with Allen and all of the, I believe, Christmas tree in the park.
Okay. Main Street Witch's Night Out's on October the 10th, Main Street's Witch's Ride on October the 11th, and Monsters on Main, which is always a big event here in Columbia, and it seems to just be getting bigger and bigger, and so it's going to be on Halloween, October 31st. Any questions on the announcements? Okay, public comments? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment, I don't, everyone in the room may already know this, but if you don't, you should. There was a pretty large stay-up here in Columbia last week, two, or week before last?
Week before last.
Week before last, and it was one of those type things that could have got out of hand, I think, quite easily, because of the magnitude of it. The, pretty well organized, except for being stupid, but things were stolen, things were hidden out, things were borrowed, they brought back, it's pretty complex, I'd be lined up on a shelf like that line or something. But the comment I want to make to the mayor and council, and to chief, for sure, and the general public is, our police department handled that thing, as far as I could tell, flawlessly. They made one mistake, they walked me out in the middle of the night to tell me something, that stuff was stolen, stuff was on my property. But after that, after I got back to sleep, it was a pretty deal. They came in, everyone who had contact with me were so professional, I was just, I'm very, very proud of that for being a police department. And I think within, how many hours, they were apprehended?
Not quite 24.
Yeah, less than 24 hours. That's a pretty big deal. That's a pretty big deal. I watched the, a lot of the municipal police departments in Shelby County, and a lot of them are bigger than us, but I want to see them being a whole lot better. That was a really great piece of police work, and I applaud you, and I just wanted to say.
Thank you, appreciate that. Good job. Any other comments? Okay, well, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I didn't have a comment about that, but I did have, are we allowed to have questions here?
That was the reason for the comments, and the questions, so.
I think comment, I think you thought of something, but I just wanted to ask you a question as far as the water board. The materials you had mentioned, who are they for, what company, or are we getting materials for, or supplies for, sorry, the business? Are we allowed to know that? I, I understand. Sorry?
On what job?
Um, I, I understand there's a big data center in the area, is it for that?
We don't have a data center here, it's time.
Okay, is there?
What materials is your, huh?
Okay, you have bit, or mining?
Well, we don't have that now. There, there is a piece of property that.
I read the SEC filings, so for the water board, the, the things that were installed in the residence, who monitors that? Who was the company that put the, the things in the meters? I mean, can we have a way to contact them? I mean, are they monitoring, so when water's shut off, or, you know, ramped up, or?
Well, can I, can I interrupt for a second here, Alan?
Don't interrupt me, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I will interrupt you then, because the Columbia Water Board is independent from the city of Columbia, they are not part of the Columbia, of the city of Columbia, so if you have questions for the water board, I would suggest you go to the water board meeting and take it up with them, so, because the city council does not control the water board.